That's what makes my house walk.
(laughing)
Where is my... You come, you say, take it. I got there.
Oh, you would pinch this right in front of... You just said, you just said the tape side.
Oh. No wonder I couldn't see it. Six o'clock, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. First off, if everybody that has cell phones will please mute them, cut them off, throw them in the trash, do something with them. All right. The invocation tonight will be done by Commissioner Wilkins, pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Gleason. Mr. Wilkins.
Let us pray. Gracious Father God, we come before your presence right now just to say thank you, Father. We thank you for allowing us to gather here one more time. Father God, we pray wisdom on this meeting, Father God, for touches each one of us individually and collectively, Father God, that we may do the things that are pleasing unto our citizens, but also pleasing in your sight. We pray for our country, Father God, we pray that evil doers would never have their way. We thank you, God, we love you, in Jesus' holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Good to be with you. Good to be with you. United States of America. To the God of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Commissioner Albright.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Kaczynski.
Here.
Commissioner Gleason.
Commissioner Ray.
Mayor Wheeler.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, our approval of agenda, is there any subtractions or additions? Mayor Pro Tem.
I would like to take item number nine A, the Seguassa Eastman acquisition, and move it to the consent agenda. It's already been discussed, and I think we're okay with this.
All right, any other changes or additions to the agenda? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented with changes.
So moved.
Commissioner Gleason, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero. I'll entertain at this time a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Commissioner Wilkins, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero. This is the chief here. Chief, we're gonna do a proclamation for the National Night Out, so if you would come up and accept this.
All right, this is proclamation for National Night Out, October first, 2024. Whereas National Night Out is a national night out of community building campaign to promote police community partnerships and neighborhood camaraderie to make our neighbors safe, more comfortable to live. And whereas National Night Out provides a unique opportunity for the city of Creedmoor, joining forces with thousands of other communities across the country in promoting cooperative police community crime prevention efforts. And whereas the city of Creedmoor community plays a vital role in assisting the Creedmoor Police Department through cooperative crime, drug, and violence prevention efforts in the city of Creedmoor. And whereas it is essential that all citizens of the city of Creedmoor be aware of the importance of police community partnerships and the impact that their participation can have on reducing crime and violence in the city of Creedmoor. And whereas police community partnerships, neighborhood safety, awareness, and cooperation are important things of the National Night Out program. Therefore, I, Robert Bigwiler, Mayor of the city of Creedmoor, do hereby call upon all citizens of the city of Creedmoor to join the Creedmoor Police Department in National Night Out, supporting the annual National Night Out on October first, 2024. Thanks, sir. And I, Mr. Wilkins.
I agree, what time is?
What time?
All right. We've got that, we have nobody to address the board. Thank you, ma'am. All right. Item eight is public comment. First on the list is John Wilkerson. Mr. Wilkerson, you state your name and your address, please.
John Wilkerson, related to Creedmoor.
Yes, sir.
Just have a question on who is responsible for repaving a section of the street that was cut into two for building a house? I mean, on Rogers Street, there has been a place where the pavement was dug out for about three months now, and no repairs have been done, so I guess... And then with the city, who is responsible with not bust all that down?
It was probably Seguassa dug it out for piping. And when they do that, they request Public Works to go back and pave it. We've got three spots in Whitehall that have to be done soon.
City manager.
Yes, I would like to respond. I'd be glad to follow up on that tomorrow with Public Works, yes, sir.
Um, and the Public Works... I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Way.
My apologies.
No problem.
Uh, the Public Works comments, the Seguassa cut on Rogers Avenue, the P.O. was received by Seguassa. The expected completion on that is supposed to be the twenty-third of August. And then they're also supposed to take care of the one in Whitehall and Mayview as well.
Thank you, Mr. Way.
Thank you, sir.
I'd say just about three bucks and get a little water, a little water.
All right, Mr. Igdeppa. Name and address, please.
My name, I'm on the five, it's five fourteen Lake Road here in Creedmoor. At this rate of running the speed, uh, but we, I heard, I guess, I don't know if it's still around, so I don't know. But the city's planning, uh, like a New Year's Eve celebration like that? I, I don't know, I guess, certainly. So I think in my opinion, the city of Creedmoor, that will be nice, and I think the city of Creedmoor will be glad and happy. All right, I don't know how the city has to do, like, this thing and everything, and I think the city should support, understand, I think. Because we always support the valley, the eight corner, New York. I think the small cities have been doing that now, so it will be nice for you to, uh, what we consider that, I didn't do the district and everything. I'm just wondering what we can travel there and tell this in the round, we get the eight corner, if we could get that drop. But it will be nice for you, the, uh, city when it considers that for us to be around in New Year's Eve, that will be, I think that will be very nice, and the citizens will be happy and pleased, I think, thank you.
Thank you, sir. I said back. Yeah, we can do a turkey drop. Okay, let's see, public comment, we did that. Move down to item ten, new business budget amendment. Mr. Baines.
I'm here, Mayor Board. Um, tonight I bring forward the first budget amendment of the year. Uh... This is the standard one that's done on the year, which includes, uh, O B P O at the end of F Y D for that we are rolling over in the current fiscal year. Also, the budget amendment is, uh, the eighty-six thousand, uh, eighty-six thousand dollars for the S R O that will be added to the F U department. If you look down, it's broken up between the salary and all of the benefits as well. Uh, next is the five hundred dollars that the state department will need donations for the K N O program. They'll have to pay for those expenses. And lastly, is twenty thousand dollars for the agreement of the Davenport to call early on the last for the, uh, for the not sixteen, twenty thousand dollars for the work that they want to do, uh, on behalf of the state, how many days to, uh, get for, uh, make sure we're in this family. Get a handle, get, get their twenty, take it off. Do you have any questions?
Commissioner Way, any questions? Commissioner Gleason.
Motion.
Mayor Pro Tem. Commissioner Albright. Commissioner Wilkins. None. All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion is made by Commissioner Way. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero. Thanks, sir.
Wait a minute, you can't add something.
No, I'm looking at the... It's a good news that I think you all late here, um, and just we received updates on the office of baseball management for the Grand River team. They have extended the deadline to the June period, twenty twenty six, instead of the initial deadline to October period, twenty twenty five. He's given us to the end of the national fifteen year term, so some of the...
Don't go too far. Um, next, item ten C, Davenport engagement agreement. B. I thought, no, that's what we just did, right? Budget amendment, okay. I saw that S R O, and I thought that's what we covered. Old age is terrible. Okay, ten B, supplemental school resource officer agreement. City manager.
Mr. Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem members of the board. July the first, twenty twenty four, the school resource officer agreement between Granville County Government and the city of Creedmoor automatically renewed, automatically renewed for one additional year for the city to provide an S R O for South Granville High School. That agreement will expire each year, this year will be June thirty, twenty twenty five. The first amendment to that agreement, which was dated July one twenty-three, to the original agreement above, was to provide one additional S R O for South, uh, for Holly Middle School for one year, which expired on June thirty, twenty twenty four. In order to continue providing one S R O for Holly Middle School, Superintendent Stan Winborn suggested a new agreement directly between the Board of Education and the city of Creedmoor. The Board of Education agrees to reimburse the city of Creedmoor a total of seventy-five thousand dollars, as under the previous agreement. City Attorney Kevin Hornick has prepared a proposed agreement with the Board of Education, and they considered that item last night, and it, they approved it at the meeting last night. Uh, Granville County Public Schools are currently scheduled to begin on August the twelfth. Troy is prepared to cover that spot, but we'd like to get this agreement completely executed.
All right, Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Albright.
Um, no, no, no question.
Mayor Pro Tem.
So this is eighty-six thousand dollars more out of the general fund besides what we used to balance the budget.
The, Chef, Chef Granville is seventy-five thousand by the county. Holly Middle School is by the Board of Education for seventy-five thousand?
Yeah, but...
Separate from that would be the Mount Energy agreement that we...
It's where footing the bill for.
Yes, ma'am, yes, by eighty-six.
That's what I'm saying, that eighty-six was not in our original budget.
No.
In the budget that we just approved, that eighty-six is not in there.
No, that's what the budget amendment was for, to transfer those money to do this.
That's what I'm saying, I'm saying, so it's gonna be eighty-six thousand more out of the general fund. Okay, that's all I wanted.
Commissioner Gleason.
No question.
Mr. Way.
Can you tell me, can you remind me, how much money did we put back in the general fund?
For F Y twenty-four?
Yeah.
So they haven't, they didn't finalize yet.
I know it was a rough estimate.
Rough estimate, um, you give a rough estimate all the time I hear, I was thinking a hundred thousand, around, around that, so, Granville.
Commissioner Wilkins, question for the city manager, any way to recoup any of that from the Board of Education or Granville County?
I'm sorry, sir.
Any way, sorry, any way to recoup that from either Granville County or the Board of Education?
If, they have requested a grant for the Mount Energy. If that gets approved, it'll be October, November, before they know. Uh, if they get reimbursed for that, then we would in the agreement.
Great, thank you. Any other questions? Not seeing any, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Motion is made by Commissioner Way, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, no. Motion carries five to zero. All right, I think I'm back where I need to be now. All right, let's go with the, uh, Davenport engagement agreement.
Okay, I think earlier, I'm imagining you go over there from ditch. They mentioned it can be discussed in terms of that they were going to be... The nature of their profile, um, to make sure that the city is timely to go up to that project, and, and... So this agreement, in order for them to begin, uh, may be documented by the actual management, but we want, I'm going to bring it to you all for approval to hear that agreement. Uh, we, Davenport, if you have any questions, in order to that, if you approve, uh, we signed and came it on over, we got...
Mayor Pro Tem, any questions?
No.
Commissioner Gleason, any questions?
Motion.
Mr. Albright.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Way. Mr. Wilkins.
Yes, sir.
All right, at this time I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Mr. Wilkins. Mr. Wilkins has made the motion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose no. Motion carries five to zero. Thanks, sir, as always, job well done. All right, we move down to eleven, which is discussion items. Eleven A, review of October first, Board of Commissioners' meeting date. City Manager.
Mr. Mayor, it was brought to my attention, um, the twenty twenty-four National Night Out Event was scheduled, is scheduled for five thirty to seven thirty on October the first. Which directly conflicts with the City Commissioner's six o'clock regular meeting. I wanted to bring this to your attention to see if the board would prefer to leave it as scheduled or reschedule the October one date to a different date to be able to attend both events. Um, if I can add, going forward, I talked to the chief today, going forward, we're going to have this National Night Out selection by the chief the first Tuesday in every October. Going forward, when we do the calendar in January, we'll know to either go to the first, go to the Monday or the Wednesday after that first Tuesday to schedule board meetings, and it won't be a conflict in the future.
Well, I think it's very appropriate for us to be at National Night Out and, uh, our meeting can be put off, so I'm in favor of, uh, moving that meeting. Um, Commissioner Wilkins, any questions?
No, I think.
Commissioner Albright, you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question, because it used to be in August, what happened to August and moving it to October?
The, the cities have a choice between August and October, and last year, or the year before, it was so hot.
Both years.
It was just so hot that staff decided that they'd recommend trying to move it to October instead, so it's more enjoyable for everyone.
That was the only reason.
Okay.
So some pick August, like Oxford's doing August, we're doing October, and going forward, we're trying to stick to October so there's no conflict on scheduling, which we do in January.
Yeah, we just have to make sure that we always look at the calendar, the city calendar, before we schedule other events, so that, because we always seem to be the ones that have to move our. Who did? I've just said that. Yeah. Yeah, but I just said, like, going forward, any other event that we plan that aren't city commissioner events or planning board or whatever, we have to make sure that we have somebody that looks over the calendar first, because we always end up moving our meetings.
Yeah, I think we had that covered, but then they decided to move it from August to October, so that's where the conflict came up. It wasn't a conflict when we did the schedule, but we'll, we'll watch it.
Aye.
Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Pro Tim, any questions? Commissioner Gleason.
I have no questions, but it's appropriate. I have to make a motion, we move the October first meeting to October seventh, which is a Monday.
That's the next Tuesday.
Monday thirtieth, I think.
Monday, September thirtieth, October second is Wednesday, if you want to move it close to that first date.
The seventh is that?
The seventh is a Monday the following week.
I just want to make sure it wasn't.
I was suggesting, I was suggesting Monday the thirtieth, which is just.
What, uh, so your, your suggestion was what?
I didn't have a suggestion, I just want to make sure that it wasn't.
Okay, your suggestion.
September thirtieth, day before.
Okay, that's, uh.
It's Monday, I think.
Try this, September thirtieth or October thirtieth?
September thirty or September thirty.
Normally be October first, is that correct?
Correct, I'm saying September thirtieth in lieu of October first.
Okay. Um, anybody else have any other suggestions?
That's what she said.
Okay, anybody else have a suggestion?
Again, I think since it's an October meeting, the second would be more appropriate, the thirtieth.
Okay. We have two on October second. I, I'll go with the second, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Push my button, I must say that I'm not here that week. I'm in California that week. It was a last minute thing. Well, well, but, I mean, that was a, it's a new thing.
Let's go with, we'll go with that, I guess.
Commissioner, Commissioner Way, are you, are you able to make the meeting?
Yeah.
So where are we at?
The seventh.
Second.
Seventh.
Is it the seventh or the second? I thought they said the second, which was just.
Some did, some did say the second.
All right, now, where are we, October second, October seventh, or September thirtieth?
I got the seventh, I'm okay with the seventh. I'm okay with the seventh, because I would be here, that would be better for me.
I'm fine with the seventh.
Okay, consensus is the seventh.
I don't have anything on the counter.
All right. So we'll just move that meeting to the seventh, Commissioner Wilkins.
So when is the work session scheduled, is that the following week?
Yes.
Twenty-first, that's what makes you know. Okay, we're going to, twenty-fourteen or twenty-one?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one, okay.
So it'd be two weeks, so.
And are you available?
I have.
Wait a minute.
I have a regularly scheduled meeting established, but I can, I'm sure that we at the firm, we can have somebody either cover my other meeting or cover this one, depending on.
We'll try to do something, we don't need you that day.
That's probably everybody, or probably the city that's interested in that.
All right, we'll move, we'll move along. Uh, eleven B, civil penalty reduction discussion, Mr. Attorney.
So this is kind of discussion items for you all this evening, um, I think it's become a pattern. I think maybe we've all noticed that, uh, as the city has become more involved in code enforcement processes, I think we've done a fairly good job lately of securing compliance relatively quickly, however, uh, uh, you're getting, getting violators to pay the outstanding penalties has been much more difficult. So one of the, um, one of the options that City Manager and I discussed, uh, is the possibility of delegating authority to the City Manager to reduce, uh, the outstanding civil penalty by a certain percentage, uh, upon payment. You're first upon compliance with the, the violator's city ordinance, the violator has to correct the violation, and then, uh, they have to pay within a certain period of time. Fifty percent, seventy-five percent will have you of the total civil penalty balance. The idea is that, uh, first, this would hopefully encourage, uh, violators to bring, you know, their families into compliance more quickly, so that they're not running into the penalty bill. It'll also incentivize them, uh, how they can, if the type of penalties, uh, that they will be obligated to pay might be, you know, reduced. Um, so this is just, with it, with an option that the City Manager and I discussed and wanted to, uh, to bring to the board for discussion. I think it, it would probably be a wise, uh, policy, and frankly, it's probably something that we could or should have put into the city's, uh, code enforcement, uh, ordinance. Or ordinances on both the city code and the C E O at some point in the future, if this is a, a policy that the board figures. But I think for now, it's worth some discussion and, uh, you know, I think we probably could implement this as a, as a policy decision by the board on a, a more quick, a quicker timetable. Um, so I think that that's, uh, available for, for that's an item that we have for discussion this evening. We also, um, kind of in connection with this, the City Manager has spoken with an individual who has an outstanding, uh, civil penalty balance of just over eighteen hundred dollars. I think there's been some discussion about whether a policy like this, uh, could be implemented for that individual. We have copies of a settlement and payment agreement for you all to review. It would, uh, the property, as I understand, has already been brought into compliance with, uh, city ordinances. Um, the, the individual would pay, I think nine hundred and thirty, I don't know, fifty, fifty percent bounds, uh, immediately. Property owners have agreed to this, um, so if this is a policy that the board wishes to consider, um, we have a settlement and payment agreement that you all can also consider. Um, this would not be a drawn up policy that would delegate authority to the City Manager, this would be a decision that you'd be making on an individual, on this individual's case.
Kevin, have you talked to any other municipalities that have done something like this? Yeah, well, did it work for them?
This is, it's not uncommon, um, so local governments have the authority to waive or negotiate, uh, civil penalties, interest and other fees as part of, uh, the resolution of these code enforcement cases. I think it does, uh, I think it depends on the nature of the violators. Um, I think it's uncommon that, or it's unlikely that this sort of policy would, uh, for instance, incentivize somebody's larger corporations, um, you know, uh, corporate property owners to, you know, correct violations like, uh, overgrown grass or weeds. Just because, I think, the amount of bureaucracy that sometimes takes before they're aware of the violation, it's not worth, uh, the, it, it, they're often, I think they feel better off just letting it roll and, and see what happens, whether the city's willing to fight them over or not. But I think that for individual property owners, and which is, I think, going to be much more common in Creedmoor, uh, I think it's just probably going to have, uh, would, would create some incentive for individuals to bring their property into compliance more quickly and to pay at least a significant, uh, sum or portion of the balance to civil penalty management quickly. Uh, it would also, I think, be an means for the city to, um, to show some leniency to individual property owners, um, particularly those who are trying, you know, quickly to take some action. I think we've had some discussion, uh, related to the amendments to the city code and C E O enforcement provisions about, I guess, you would, or over. I think the city would like to be lenient towards individuals who have some valid, uh, reason perhaps why they violated, violated the ordinance and were not able to correct it immediately. Uh, so long as they're, you know, they're taking steps, uh, on a good basis, uh, where you can find square. I think it's individuals who may be letting things linger, um, that we are, you know, less likely to, to, to look favorably on. So these are the kind of things that can be worked into a policy that we need to, to see.
Thanks, sir. Commissioner Wilkins, any comments? Let me answer a question, one question I had, no comments. Commissioner Albright. Mayor Pro Tim.
So this is only private property owners, we're not talking commercial, so it won't affect commercial businesses.
Well, I, I think that's, that's something that the board could decide, I mean, I, I think that as it's presently proposed, it would apply to any property, any violation of C E O or, uh, the city code.
And this would save us legal fees for you not drafting ridiculous.
I think, exactly, I think the idea would be that, um.
More cost effective.
Right, we, we don't have to, it, it should limit the amount of legal proceedings that the city has to initiate to first, uh, cause a property owner to bring their property into compliance. While I don't think we've had to do this yet, the idea would limit the expense that the city has to undertake if you get a court, um, compelling compliance, the property owner doesn't do it voluntarily, then you've got a hire contract. And would limit, you know, the, the legal fees and expenses related to, uh, taking court action to try to collect the outstanding civil penalty balance.
So when we have situations such as this, is the city allowed, I think, I think Mr. Frango's answered this for me a couple of years ago, but I don't remember the answer. Are we allowed to collect back the cost that the city has expended to get to a certain point, the certified letter fees, the registered letter fees? We can't collect any of that back?
No, so what we can collect are the, the civil penalties that are imposed, uh, obviously, and what you can also collect is, uh, under certain circumstances, if you get a court order, um, you know, uh, injunction or an order of abatement to the court that says, that directs the violator, the property owner to bring their property into compliance within a specific period of time. And the order will also say, if they fail to do that, the city can, you either send Public Works out there or hire a contractor who can go out and, and correct or abate the violation for the city.
At the owner's fault.
Right, and then the cost of, uh, that abatement action is a tax of lien on the property.
So when, say we collect nine hundred dollars, and we can't take any of the amount of money that we have expended to get to this point, like certified letters, and can we, can we take that out of there?
I, I think, yeah, the, the idea is that hopefully, through this policy, the city won't be spending any more money than it would otherwise be expending, you know, for the sole, uh, off, you know, in, in, in terms of providing a notice of violation, first thing. Uh, the idea is that we would be saving, you could kind of net saving money because, uh, you know, it might cost me, give nine hundred dollars to, you know, file the lawsuit and go through those initial steps, um, and, you know, so you're not spending that money, you're, you're recouping only half of eighteen hundred. So I think the net save for the city, now, of course, this would require the property owner to take advantage of this policy.
Right.
I mean, you know, you have property owners who say, who either don't respond or who say, well, I'm not paying anything, then.
Then you definitely.
Then the city still has to make a decision about whether we're, it's worth law to pursue legal, legal action to help civil penalties. But these gives, uh, city staff an additional tool in the toolbox to try to secure, you know, voluntary or at least semi-voluntary compliance before we get to that stage where we're initiating a lawsuit.
Commissioner Gleason, any questions? Commissioner Way?
Yes, sir.
All right, since I don't believe we need a formal motion, but just a consensus on this, or do you need a motion?
So I think we're moving back to, to the policy, we don't need a motion. Uh, I think, what, what I would suggest is, um, the City Manager and I can work on putting together, like, a, a policy document that at your next meeting, you could review and adopt. And that will come spell out the specific details of what authority the City Manager has. I think if this, if the board wants to consider this, uh, settlement and payment agreement, we, we'll need some action on that this evening.
That's for the one that's pending.
That's what I'm pending right now, I'll, I'll hand these up and y'all can pass them down. Um, it's a, like I said, it's a, it's a short agreement, this would, uh, I, like I said, I think that the total civil penalty balance is essentially seventy dollars. Uh, on assignment, with the individual would pay thirty, thirty-five dollars, fifty percent, within one day of executing this agreement. The property owner would also execute a, uh, what's, what's called a confession judgment. If you complete the agreement, we can file a confession judgment with the court, and that says, that would effectively be a judgment by the court, the C E O's, or eighteen desert cities. And that would help us, uh, kind of avoid a lot of illegal proceedings that otherwise be necessary. It's kind of our, uh, insurance policy or our legacy, which the board would give us. Correct, this would be, they would be paying the fifty per, fifty percent of the total civil penalty balance, and the city would consider, uh, the code enforcement case to be closed once we receive that. So if this is something that you all are interested in, that, that, then we'll need a, a motion to vote to approve this. And I believe that the City Manager, City Manager has been in touch with this individual, this individual is comfortable with what's being proposed, but they're also aware that it has, um, the board.
City Manager.
The code enforcement officer spoke to him a week or two ago, he wasn't interested at the time, I think he gave it a lot of thought, he's out of town in, in Nagse, down working the coast. But he, he called today and notified Jerry, Code Enforcement, that he would like to do this, so I called Kevin to prepare this statement for him to sign and pay it, not fifty percent of it. And, and monthly, I can report this on my, report if we have any of those to keep you informed.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tim.
Uh, I'd like to make a motion that we approve this settlement agreement that has just been presented to us to allow our City Manager to enter into this agreement with the, uh, property owner named in this document.
All right, any further questions? Down that way. All right, we have a motion on the floor to approve the settlement payment agreement. We have a motion on the floor to approve the settlement payment agreement as presented by the attorney, by the mayor Pro Tim. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those no. Motion carries. Let's see, so pennies. All right. Page thirty. Let them talk a minute for something. I just, and I knew they were talking. Okay. Next item up to, up to bid is Main Street District permitted uses. Mr. Way.
Mr. Mayor, the, I guess, the renter or the owner, Mr. Frango's, is it the owner that's operating out of the establishment there, the garage? It's a renter that's operating out of that garage. So, the renter that's operating out of Main Street Automotive has an individual that he would like to sublease part of his space that he's, I guess, leasing to a gentleman that does tattoos. He's reached out to me and wanted to know the necessary steps to take place in order to do that. And that is where we are right now.
Mr. Frango's, I'm curious, just a quick question for you, if you wouldn't mind. I'm just, I don't know, for some reason, that little red flag goes off that we're looking at making a change to our Main Street ordinance for somebody who wants to sublease the property and not from the person that actually owns the property. Correct?
And he may propose a change to the Creedmore Development ordinance. You are allowed to make the application, anybody, whether you own property, whether you live in Creedmore, whether you don't, you are allowed to make that change because it'll come to the board. But ultimately, of course, it does affect the owner's property. And like I had alluded to in the email, the owner does have a special use permit that was granted back ten, eleven years ago. They may or may not want to jeopardize that approval. I don't know the answer to that question. Well, certainly, in order to add an additional use, the special use permit would have to be updated, changed, or superseded.
So, we would have to have the owner's input to this? It's not something this guy's just...
Right. At this site, if we're talking about, it's 417 North, if we're talking about 417 North Main, certainly, the owner needs to be party to the special use permit amendment. But if we want to allow tattoo parlors as a use in the Main Street District, any applicant may apply for that change to be forward. Doesn't necessarily apply to 417 because 417 operates under a special use permit. So, if your scenario were to come true, two things would need to happen. One, the text would need to be amended, and two, the special use permit would either need to be amended or, I'm suggesting, Kevin, maybe superseded by that conditional zoning district or a new site-specific approval.
So, this would open up the district to anybody else that wanted to put in a tattoo parlor also? It's not just that one location?
Correct. Correct. The ordinance would apply to the whole district, but any decisions specific to 417 would have to be made for 417 to have it happen.
Okay.
Mike, here's, here's, I have a question. Do you reconsider to redo, could the property owner apply for conditional zoning for that specific property, which would effectively allow whatever the existing, existing use on the special use permit is, plus the tattoo parlor without then amending the underlying Main Street District?
The tattoo parlor is not really a use that's permitted in the district, so we would, I guess we would be creating a district that would allow that use, right?
Right. So, it would be a conditional district that would last and expand the uses that are otherwise permitted in the Main Street District, but it would be conditional districts or conditional zones that apply only to that property. That would be a way that the city could go about allowing this particular use on this particular property without making tattoo parlors a permitted use throughout the entire Main Street.
Anyway, that's possible. It's impossible if you would require a site plan for that, right? Conditional district has its own terms and details, but sure, that's a possibility, that's important.
And you know, the first thing we want to hear is, will you let him do it? Why can't I do it? That type of thing. Mr. Gleason.
Couple of questions. I was here tonight, eleven years ago, I guess, when the Board of Fire Commissioners, Board of Commissioners decided to take that building out of the Fire District. Which it should never have done.
Why?
The Fire District in downtown Creedmore only allows buildings that are so close to the sidewalk, so close to one another, to have certain occupancies. And that building was removed from that downtown part of the North Carolina State Fire District laws. Then that same night, they tried to make a resolution that said, you can make it a garage, and it was already an illegal garage because it had more bays than it was originally allowed to have. But they were always there, so we won't do nothing about it. So, that's a whole different thing. That's a, that means something. I'm really confused about where can you, what would be a main concern about somebody having a tattoo parlor? I mean, what could somebody put in that, in any building on Main Street that would affect anything but if people want a tattoo, get a tattoo?
Yeah.
So, I'm just a little confused of why, where would you put a tattoo parlor in Creedmore? Well, you can't.
The district is, it's a permissible use in the C-15. Right now, today, use permitted by law in the C-15.
Does that answer your question?
Well, no, I'm, I'm just saying, I have no problem with, however, whatever it takes to have a person put a tattoo parlor in that building, does not bother me.
Mayor Pro Tim.
So, what is C-15, Mike?
Where's the issue?
Okay.
Around the C-15, no program.
So, if that building's not in the Fire District, what does the fire department do if it goes on fire? They don't respond?
No, they still...
They don't have to if it's not in their Fire District?
It's in the county's district.
No, the, the Fire District, what I'm talking about, in North Carolina, is developed around certain areas that prevents conflagration because buildings are so close together and so near to the street or whatever, that you, it limits the occupancies that you can have in those buildings. So, in order to have, for that building to have what it had, they had to take it out of that district.
Okay.
Which I guess they had the right to do, but...
No, they didn't have the right.
Nobody even asked the fire department, I would say.
They didn't have the right.
So...
The automotive's use, that was a violation of primary Fire District of the city.
Okay.
Because it was all going to be repair, muscle repair, they'd be welding, they'd be using torches, things like that, that potentially makes an accelerated fire risk, which wouldn't be allowing downtown primary district. So, the board would kind of make the decisions, so that's the district, couldn't tell it, couldn't tell the state of North Carolina, couldn't tell the Fire Department or anything like that, just if it can allow that inclusion.
So, it's not that I want every building on Main Street to turn into a tattoo parlor? We have enough of duplicative businesses on Main Street. But I, I don't see why we couldn't allow a tattoo parlor on Main Street. We've got a bar, we had a gun shop. I think if there's, is there an ordinance that prohibits tattoo parlors in itself?
In the Main Street District.
In the Main Street District. So, if we change this, it allows for tattoo parlors anywhere on Main Street?
So, unless we pursue Kevin's alternative.
With just that building?
Which would be a site-specific approval to 417, which is the conditional district process. But the conditional district process involves the site plan. If y'all remember that Creedmore Village, the conceptual site plan that has to be formulated for that site. There's quite a few issues with that site that we now would have to address as part of this site plan.
And I would hate for us to go start through all this stuff and then find out the property owner doesn't want it. You know, I think we should, I think we should find out if the property owner's in favor before we go any further.
I don't know the answer to that. I have not heard from the Jeffries.
Right? I mean, it's stupid to draft documents and start proceeding.
I think that those are kind of two distinct issues, right? The first question is, is there, does the board feel like it's in the city's interest to expand the list of permitted uses in the Main Street District?
And that's what I would like to do. That's exactly what I'd like to do.
And so, I don't know that it's necessarily relevant, whether this particular property and this particular proposal is necessarily relevant to that question, right? I think the first question is, is there somebody who is, who wants to make that text amendment application to the board and see that through? And assuming that the board, you know, obviously, we go through the planning board review process and the public hearing here, assuming that the board at the end of that process votes to approve the proposed text amendment and to make tattoo parlors a permitted use within the Main Street District, then at that stage, this particular property owner and whether this particular property owner is interested in allowing that use on their property becomes very relevant. Then you'd be, you know, to go through whatever permitting steps are necessary to either amend the special use permit, to, or what, you know, what have you, maybe to apply for like a zoning compliance permit, or like a accessory. I don't know how we would do it, it depends a lot on how we might amend the CEO to allow this use. But at that point, then, that the property owner would become very relevant, they would, I think, have to sign the application form for this particular use. But that's a, that's a down road.
Right.
It's not necessarily relevant for this first text amendment.
Okay.
We would be able to get owner in either the site plan, I'm sorry, the conditional district or the special use, right? Either way, they have to be in part.
Commissioner Gleason.
No, I guess you answered my question. If we make a text amendment to the CEO that says it's permissible, this property would still need to go through the same procedure we would need whether we did that or not.
But this property, this property would then be, it would be treated the same as if somebody, somebody wanted to sublease a portion of the property and use it for any other, you know, use that's currently permitted in the Main Street District. So, I think that, it sounds like from what Mr. Frango's is saying, that there, that might become a complicated question based on figuring out how we would, whether that would require amendment to the special use permit or whether that would, what process under our CEO would be necessary to make that happen. But that's, that's a, that's a question for down the road example that I think we need to necessarily answer.
Commissioner Wilkins, do you have any questions or comments? Commissioner Albright? Anybody else have any questions?
Yeah, I'll...
Commissioner Way?
So, that was the main question from the renter that's reached out to us a couple of times, was, "I just want to know what I need to do to sublease my spot." And I told him, I said, "No, I'm sure there's several steps that need to be done." I was under the impression that it was his automotive shop to begin with. I didn't know he was already subleasing from the owners. So, one of the issues that we would definitely need to get worked out would be, does the owner, one, want somebody to sublease his property? Two, does the guy that's subleasing the shop know that it's got to be brought up to certain standards when you submit this new request? And I think the best way to handle that, Mr. Mayor, is if we can get the city manager and maybe Mr. Frango's to go down and speak to the gentleman that's subleasing the location to deliver him the news directly from the city's perspective.
Or we could get him to come down to see Mr. Frango.
Whatever's easier.
Yeah.
That's fine with me. He can, yeah, he can take a scroll down the sidewalk, that's fine. But the biggest thing is, is I agree with Mr. Frango's with your statement. The vehicle's parked around the backside, they don't have license tags and things like that. Some of these things need to be brought up to car.
They talked to me already about fencing the yard out there, but of course, that, you need to know where that would be. If you're going to fence a yard, then you have to treat it appropriately according to our ordinance. There are site improvements that would have to be made. Again, anytime you get a new land use approval, it comes with compliance today's ordinance. And I think that's going to be the biggest challenge there. But I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Honeycutt about it, and I'll be glad to talk to Mr. Jeffries about it later on, Jeffries, to discuss it.
I think that's going to be the biggest issue.
I'll try, if I can, to stop by and see Mr. Honeycutt tomorrow, if the weather permits. I've had him work on my motorcycle some. Mayor Pro Tim.
When you talk to them and about all these cars and stuff, that gigantic pothole that almost swallows my car every time I take my dog to the vet, I understand that that driveway belongs to that property. Is there any way we can get them to pave that? It's a nuisance.
The Almond Street, right away, we're familiar with the one, you'd refer Jerry to that one, and we put it on the work order list. I think that's one of the ones he was going to do when he does his other cut, his pavements or pay up.
Oh, the city has?
So, that portion of Almond Street, from Lyons to Fleming, is city maintained road.
Okay.
The driveway that you're referring to, the potholes are actually in the right of way.
Okay. All right.
So, Steve has been put on alert that that one is a work order item, and I think he was waiting to get the asphalt and these other patches.
Yeah.
To address that one also.
Okay.
So, I believe that one's already been addressed on the work order list.
All right. I might get Mike to go down with me, and we'll get them to come see you. I, I think that'd be the best way to do that.
I appreciate everything, Mr. Mayor and city manager, Mr. Frango's.
Always our pleasure.
Thank you so much.
City manager report.
Mr. Mayor, city hall and staff continue to receive compliments from residents on the new floral, floral street banners along Main and other areas of the city. July the 22nd, 2024, Chief Willis and I met with representatives of the North Carolina Extension Office who oversees farmers markets in Grahamville, Vance, and Preston Counties. They provided the chief and I with names of eight more potential vendors to contact regarding the Creedmore Community Farmers Market. We've had three events so far. The first one, we had four vendors and eight or 10 patrons. The second one, we had no one show up on either side. The third event, this past Saturday, we had no one to show up on either side, except Campo did come and they set up under the canopy at the community developments office. But we're continuing to work these and try to get these vendors and folks together on these Saturdays that we've got, we've advertised. DC3 Executive Summer for the month ending July 31 reflected 848 work orders were opened and 57 were closed. The monthly managed services contract payment for the month totaled $11,106. August the 1st, 2024, by invitation, the mayor and I joined officials from the Town of Button and Grahamville County Government in a groundbreaking ceremony at Altech Manufacturing off of Aerial Drive for the addition of a new paint building to help streamline their production process. The last thing I have is, in anticipation of the projected flooding or rainfall, excuse me, from tropical storm Debbie, I asked public work yesterday to begin lowering the water level of Lake Rogers. I also instructed the Parks and Rec Director to close Lake Rogers Park this evening and reopen it Saturday morning to, so that we don't have any issues with public going in and out down there. If any of you have questions, that concludes my remarks.
Any questions for the city manager? And I've been living with a hurricane, Debbie, for 44 years, so I can tell you that that's a bear. All right. Um, commissioners' reports. We'll start with you, Mr. Wilkins. Mr. Mayor, my report's going to be about the letter that I wrote, and the letter's in front of each one of you. Excuse me, Mr. Wilkins, before you do that, let's do our Seguas report. And then we'll go right, I didn't...
And then we'll go right. I didn't see that on the bottom page, Todd, I'm getting old.
Sigwasa report, I don't know who has it.
I got, I got it. In the last few weeks, I've had a couple requests from citizens, and I will not be at the Sigwasa meeting on Tuesday night to report this, but I know that my partner, Commissioner Way, will do his job and tell everybody about this. But one request was that, on the email that customers get from GovHub, they were wondering if the amount of the bill could be on that email, because all other utilities do it and they don't want to have to go into opening it up and everything else. So, the answer I received was, we are negotiating with our existing billing software to change over to Tyler Technologies in the upcoming months. GovHub can't do it, so we're negotiating with them. There should be other conveniences when we switch over to Tyler. Sigwasa, Richard Bommer will certainly ask for that change to be implemented in the new software, and they anticipate that numerous enhancements to the customer port hole, bill layouts, and overall customer experience with the new software. The second question was from a resident of Creedmore who's lived here quite a while, said, if they sold their home, passed away, or whatever, and left Creedmore, would they get their original deposit money back that they paid to Creedmore Water many, many, many years ago? And the answer is, yes. In case of the deceased customer, it would go to the executor or the estate, but other than that, the records of Creed, with the Creedmore records that they have, they would be glad to refund the deposit to any unpaid balance that is remaining to their account. So those are two citizens' questions that I took care of. Sigwasa is preparing for the storm. Related to finance, customer service, human resources, and public information are doing their pre-storm activities now. Crystal Lee, the PIO, will be initiating web, social media communications to inform customers of their storm preparedness. Additionally, they will use the web social communications throughout the storm to communicate with the customers of any issues and notify our local community partners. The investments Sigwasa has made in technologies during the past several years allow Sigwasa management team to monitor in real time, thus allowing us to respond to events quicker than ever. However, as you are all aware, the best preparation and response does not mean that they can control all weather-related conditions, and they will respond as quickly as they can. Now, the latest update for the city of Creedmore service area, the Lake Rogers Water Distribution System Improvement, which was discovered in 2022 and delivered to the city board here in February of '23. The status is on schedule to repair or replace the equipment that was identified when they found out that the chlorine injection equipment inside the structure at Lake Rogers was not working properly and may not have been working properly for several years or more. Based on the discovery, a new chlorine system was designed by McGillan Association to replace the old equipment. The design is complete. In February of 2024, the Board of Directors approved the contract with H.G. Reynolds for the upgrade project. The total of this project and the design so far, and I'll say so far because things change at the, at the last moment, $261,650. There's a note that on 8/24, which was the day I spoke to the executive director the last time about this, H.G. Reynolds had notified Sigwasa they were waiting for delivery of one or more special pump components to be delivered on the job site the week of 8/5. Thus, they were going to be on site to start work on 8/12/24. The work should be completed within 30 days. So that will help the water quality in Creedmore. I was sent a copy of a posting on social media this morning, and it was posted on Nextdoor by John Mayo, and what it is, is a response from Department of, um, DEQ, Environmental Quality, to Darrell Moss and John Mayo and Roy A. Michael. And it says, "Mr. Moss, thank you for your email. We will be glad to look into your concerns with Sigwasa's drinking water quality. Public water supply staff will look into your concerns." It goes on to ask specific questions about Mr. Moss's water, which I won't go into. I'm a little disappointed that Mr. Moss came to this board, asked us for help, and then they just went out on their own. They, they didn't give us a chance to address this. But if DEQ can allay any more fears, then that's, that's all that matters. Let's make the citizens feel that they're safer. That's all I have. Robert, do you have anything to add?
I just want to take my ball and go home. The only thing I have to add is the latest executive directors report that was sent to Sigwasa board members. I did forward to the city.
All right, thank y'all very much, and thank you for the work you do with Sigwasa on Creedmore's path. Commissioner Wilkins, I apologize again, sir, but. That's not a problem, sir, that's no problem. So I wrote this letter, like the mayor, I must be getting old, because I put Chairman Carron instead of Chairman Gooch, so I know it is Mr. Gooch, who is the chairman. The reason I want us on the board to send this is basically so we can say we back our citizens. I know that we've had several citizens complain about their water, and we acknowledge that Sigwasa's position is the water complies with all federal and state standards. But I say this to you, if you have internet and power outages in your home, and the power company tells you, well, the transformer and transmission wires are just fine, doesn't help your situation. If you have a problem with your internet going in and out, and they tell you, signal coming out of, out from us is just fine, we understand why you can't watch TV or use your cell phone. So I'm just asking, as a group, we take this letter, and if you want to make any changes to it, please suggest them, and we send it to Sigwasa just to say we are backing up our citizens. You have in front of you, if you have a problem with it, please discuss it now. Do you want to make that discussion? Okay. Commissioner Way, any discussion on that?
I don't have any issue with it. We all know that we're here for the citizens, especially, all of us are citizens of the community and our customers of Sigwasa. So if we want to just state what we already know, we're doing the best that we can as a city board and representatives of Sigwasa, then I stated it with former Mayor Moss, the squeaky wheel.
Yes, sir.
If we as citizens and representatives of our, our.
My pleasure.
Appeal to the state and federal authorities to see if they can help us out. We're doing the same thing. We, we know that the water is beating the levels, but we also know that some days we cut our water on and it doesn't smell right.
And it's not to point fingers, I want to make that clear.
And it might be, you know, in some places, I, I'm aware, some homes in Creedmore actually have discoloration to their water. I haven't experienced discoloration. I have experienced the smell in the last few weeks. But we need to, to see what we can do to make things better. I, I agree, just to say it meets standards is, I mean, okay, yeah, it meets standards, but.
Doesn't help me.
It doesn't help.
And that's why I gave those two examples.
Commissioner Gleason. Again, same thing, I, I kind of agree with the letter. I've certainly spoken up at many, 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 many Sigwasa meetings. And it's very, as a, all I can go back to as a child growing up in a home that had well water, wonderful place in well water. And then we'd go to some town that had city water, and I'd say, my God, that's awful water. It was awful water. Because we were drinking real water, and we're all drinking water that runs through pipes that we haven't seen, and we didn't watch the guy who put it in the ground. See, my biggest concern is that Sigwasa doesn't have the resources. I don't want to say it doesn't have the wherewithal, because I'm not, I don't know much about it, so I'm, they may very much have the wherewithal, but you can have all the tools in the world, but if you don't have material, you can't make anything. And I, and I think their biggest issue is, and when we looked at the bottom of this letter, and it talks about PFAS, which is a terrible problem across the country. This isn't something that's local. This is a worldwide problem. And probably America is doing more than any other country in the rest of the world. But the bottom line is, it's extremely expensive, extremely expensive. And who's going to pay for it? The same person that's complaining about his water that smells. So my biggest problem is, somebody's got to figure out a way that Sigwasa can be made a different type of organization so that more than just rate payers help to pay the bill. That's all I have.
All right. Mayor Proten.
So, Commissioner Wilkins, I know, and Commissioner Way just said that he sent the executive director's report to you, which outlines where Sigwasa is on PFAS, and it also notified us that we have five years to fix it. That was granted by the federal government. We're not taking five years to fix it, we are on it now. There was a, there was a statement on Nextdoor that the city of Creedmore gave Sigwasa in the past few years a half a million dollars. Let me clear that one up real fast. The city of Creedmore did not give Sigwasa $500,000 in the past few years. We wouldn't be allowed to do that without an MOU, am I correct, Mr. City Attorney? Right. So let's get that straight. I couldn't sign this letter because I'd be sending the letter to myself. And I do know that we're doing everything we can on PFAS. We're doing it as fast as we can. Sigwasa notified us that they found another manufacturer that's working on a filtration system, which is half the cost of what we thought it would be. We're waiting to find out how that works. We were waiting for the DEQ to come back to us and tell us if they approved our plan to go forward and how we were going to handle it. And we sent that to them in April, and we just got it back just now. So I know things take time. We are not ignoring PFAS. We are taking it seriously. We're doing everything that we can. I've been told by one resident that they've got a filtration system in their house that filters out PFAS. I, I didn't know there was such a thing, but we are, I, I feel like everybody is saying that Sigwasa's not doing their job, and we are doing our job, and we're doing it more timely than we have to. And I won't be able to sign this letter, because I'd be sending a letter to myself when I am working with this board and that board to try and make sure that this gets done. So, I mean, we can send the letter, it can be sent, it's just, I don't think it's going to make, we can only work as fast as we can and without, like Commissioner Gleason says, without the resources of financial backing. Right now, we're looking at a filtration system of $10 to $20 million, spread out over 5,600 customers. We've got complaints about the rate right now, it only went up 3%. If we have got to shell out $20 million within the next five years, get ready, because there's going to be a huge rate hike, a huge rate hike. We are trying to do this all as timely and properly and safely as we can without killing the customers that we have. And, and again, like Commissioner Gleason says, and he comes to every meeting, and he talks every time, and I'm so proud to see him there every meeting, we're doing everything we can, but there's a lot of components to go. There is not a system in this country that can guarantee we can get it as low as we can. We don't know what the source of the PFAS in Lake Holt are. We don't know where it's coming from. There's PFAS in this bottle. There's PFAS in frying pans. Every nonstick pan in your house has PFAS in it. We can get it out of the water at an exorbitant amount of money, but you're still going to have PFAS in your body, and you're still going to get it from other sources. PFAS will never go completely away out of everybody. That's all I got.
Commissioner Albright.
I don't think there's much left for me to say.
Yeah, I just, it's going to go.
I just kind of, yeah, what she said and he said and he said. I mean, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm fine with, with, you know, signing the letter. I mean, I, I don't, like I told Mr. Moss, I don't have, I didn't have any discoloration. You know, I get the occasional odd chlorine smell when they're flushing the lines or things like that, but I don't have, I don't have pressure sometimes at certain times when I, I like to use the shower, but, you know, that's something that just, you know, I guess everybody decides to take a shower and walk at all at the same time. I know Mr. Moss said that he thought that this board had a magnificent opportunity to go to Sigwasa and tell them, you know, what we need, what, what we wanted and what our citizens wanted, but I don't think he gave us, I don't want to say a solution, but he gave us an idea of what he wanted us to do about that. So I'm not, I'm not sure where we go from here as far as a, as a board, our community. I think a lot of this stuff is over my head, because I, it's a lot. It's a lot of, a lot of things and a lot of moving parts and money and the government giving us money to, to do certain things and to look at our pipes and, you know, I'm glad, I'm glad to, to sign the letter if, if that's what they want as far as us saying that we support our citizens with our water. I mean, I'm, you know, that's what, that's what we got elected for, is to support our citizens. This letter is what gives them a little bit of hope that we heard what they said.
Well, I think that hopefully our citizens know that we're doing the best we can. We've got two representatives on the board that are at every meeting, we've got another commissioner that's at every meeting that is promoting the ideas behind the improvements that we have. The biggest thing I've heard, though, is we hear complaints, but Sigwasa doesn't hear them, because these people don't go to the meetings. They don't go, and first, and to, to your letter, though, Mr. Wilkins, that speaks for you. It really doesn't speak with the names of the people that go in there. My thing is, I think your letter's great, but I think the best way you could do that is present it at a Sigwasa meeting, to where you get in there, just flipping around, you get in there and you say, this is the way I feel, and I have heard from my constituents and the members of my city, this is the way they feel. And I think if each one of us, or whoever feels up to it, goes and does the same thing, it would carry more weight than just one letter with a bunch of signatures on it. However, I think that if you want to put that letter out there and let those who want to sign it, sign it, then Lord, God bless you and.
Definitely, yes.
And I think we have a consensus to do that, so.
But I also think that the people that constantly write on these Facebook pages and other pages need to get out from behind their computers and actually come to a meeting and come, you know, because I, you know, I hear them complaining all the time, and that's okay. Or maybe if there's a position open on the board, sit your tail on one of these chairs and actually, you know, get the browbeating that these, our, our commissioners and maybe Mr. Gleason hears as well.
Well, you're going to hear the same thing that we hear. Why should I do that, or you're not going to listen to me anyway?
Well.
But by doing it on the internet, they can complain to anybody that will listen, and it makes them feel better.
Yeah, but it, all it does is get the whole community fired up about things that these kind people already. these kind people already have themselves on the board and are already getting, you know, a taste.
But it gives them a chance to vent without being responsible for it too.
Commissioner Wilkins. And that's my pushback. If you consistently hear, well, the water complies with all federal state standards, there's no incentive to go complain.
Well, what do you, what do you suggest that we do about this other than submit this letter?
Submit this letter and say we back our citizens and we go from there. See what happens.
But what, what happened back?
I want to see the result of the letter. Let's see what happens. All right. Mayor Proten.
I, I don't mean to say that I don't support this. I don't, I do support.
I didn't hear you say that.
Well, I do support it. I just, we, I'm on the Sigwasa board. I know about PFAS. I know we're doing everything we can, but it's going to take time. We can't do this overnight. They don't even have a filtration system in the United States that's guaranteed to get this down to .04 micromilligram. There's not a system yet. We can't make, um, we, we spent, I, it was in the report, I don't know how many hundreds of thousands of dollars testing the water to see where the PFAS levels were. And that report is on Sigwasa's website. It's out there for the public. But I've got to tell you that I ask all the time, how many complaints have we got this month? How many complaints have we got?
Last count.
Yeah, 12. And, and complaining on social media.
I agree.
So, I mean, I, I understand this, but I just don't, I just don't know what else we, we can do for it. And I'm, and I appreciate the fact that you are representing other citizens in Creedmore, but if those other citizens would fill out the customer complaint form, which I did last week because my water tasted like mud and then my system got flushed and it was okay.
Yeah, and I put that in there. We're directing citizens to.
Yeah. Okay.
I agree with you.
I do, I do support.
Thank you.
Trying to get better water for the citizens.
Oh, no doubt.
I absolutely do.
Again, we're not pointing fingers. Absolutely not.
What I would suggest though, that you don't mail a letter to them, that you go to a meeting.
Well, I'm asking you to come from the city, us, from the board. So that would be, our city clerk would send this on our behalf.
I, I still think you'd get more traction with it if you presented it, even if you mail it. Do it so it's in the minutes.
I was trying to do that.
And, uh, if you can't, let me know. I'll do it, whatever you want to do.
Okay. Next meeting.
Just let me know. I just think it's, if we're going to put any impact in it, we've got to back it up with our presence.
Yeah, and it's next Tuesday, Mr. Mayor, and if you want, I'll present it.
There you go.
If you get it to me, I'll present it. I'll be there. I mean, I agree with it. I'm elected as a board member by the citizens of Creedmore to represent the city of Creedmore.
Just so, I just think it'd be better than just mailing it.
But, but let's send it also.
Yeah, but physically present it so it's in the minutes and everything.
Commissioner Way, he will do that.
Yeah, if you can get it to me, I'll physically present it and put it in the minutes.
All right, um, are we good? Mr. Wilkins. Yes, sir. Thank you so much, uh, board and Mr. Mayor. All right, um, Mr. Way.
I haven't done anything.
Um, Mr. Albright.
Um, I just, uh, want to give you a reminder that I will be here for the next meeting. I believe I had asked for that off as I was visiting my parents.
I'd rather your parents came here, but.
I'm working on it. I'm working on it. Uh, but yeah, I'm going to be here and, um, that's all I have.
Commissioner Gleason.
I'm like, we were traveling earlier. Didn't do much in the beginning of the month. More, I'm attending National, oh, excuse me, North Carolina League of Municipalities. Has two classes in Youngsville, one on Council Academy, which is going to tell us how we should act as a board. And another one in rules and procedures that a commissioner should use for, at, at those meetings. I attended the Sigwasa meeting. Um, I want to, I want to bring something up and I, I hope it's appropriate that I make a motion during my, uh, presentation. And first of all, before I make a motion, I'm going to tell you how much I, as a commissioner, believe in the fact that we need a diversity, equity and inclusion committee in the city of Creedmore. Not that we're not very diverse, not that we don't have equality, not that we don't have inclusion. We do. But we should also have a committee that watches this, that helps us, that gives us ideas. And I got to take some of the blame for the fact that we are where we are because of my illness in the beginning of the year and missing meetings and, um, not advocating probably as much as I should, but I will. But I'd like to make a motion tonight that we suspend the DEI committee until the fall, when and if we can find enough citizens to make at least six board members. Uh, and then I would make a motion that we re-initiate the DEI committee because again, I can't stress enough how important I think that that is everywhere. So I make a motion that we suspend the DEI committee till further notice.
All right. You, you originally stated in your motion till the fall.
Well, I'm going to try to get it before, but until further.
Until further notice would probably be better.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Way, any questions or comments?
What are the current members of that board?
There are two members written out.
Do we know which ones they are again?
Yep.
So Rachel Ren, she's going to have to resign because she no longer lives in the city of Creedmore. She moved to.
She moved.
She moved to Saturday. She's no longer in Creedmore. So the committee does have two people.
Okay, um.
So who do they have? So who's Mike Anderson?
Anderson and Manny.
Manny.
Yeah.
Mr. Manny.
Commissioner Wilkins. I would ask that the votes must mostly be taken by roll call, by alphabetical order of last name.
I'm, I'm sorry.
I understand.
I would like the vote to be taken via roll call in alphabetical order of last name. All right, sir. Um, Commissioner Albright, any questions?
No.
Mayor Proten.
Nope.
Mr. Wilkins, any questions? None.
All right. We have a motion on the floor to, uh, suspend the DEI committee until such time as we get six board members about covered. All right, let's see.
I do have one question. I do have one question. I'm sorry.
You do have questions?
Yes.
Okay.
What does it say? They have to have six members. Is that anywhere in the city?
Yes, sir.
Somebody pull it up and show that to me.
A resolution we have.
Just want to see it.
Do we, isn't that part of?
That was.
Just want to see it, please.
Um, Mayor, um, City Manager.
Yeah, we voted on it. There is no minimum, there is no minimum requirement of, uh.
I didn't think so.
Three members can meet and to talk, two members can meet or three can talk about membership drives and other issues. They just can't, don't have the authority without a forum to make a recommendation to this board. So Mr. Gleason's recommending six. It's a recommendation on his behalf, I believe.
And part of the motion.
I thought we did kind of all the boards, all the boards.
Nope.
No fewer than five and no more than eight. See, right there. That was revised, yeah, that's the rule is five. And that was revised in January. We did that.
So no fewer than five would be a minimum number. All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Proten.
So if we suspend it indefinitely, that means years can go by without making a decision on this. And, and Commissioner Gleason?
I would assume.
Do not take responsibility. You, you haven't done anything wrong.
I'm not taking any responsibility.
Uh, you are, you, you have done a great job as a liaison on this board and I, I want to congratulate you for, for your work on this board.
I do that.
Um, I just, I just, I'm concerned about the indefinitely because that kind of leaves us in limbo for.
But I mean, as I had suggested earlier, it means we still have a DEI committee. They're just inactive at this particular point till we can get enough interest in members to participate.
So is there going to be a membership drive?
They can still do that.
Okay, all right. Okay, that's all.
I made my motion to say if we can't get six people on that board by December, I'll bring up another vote that we do away with it.
Well, let's, uh, leave it like it is. And then in December, if you want to bring up that vote, then we can do it at that point without it being part of this motion.
I just want everybody to know that I'm 100% behind the DEI committee.
Yeah, and, and to be fair, you are the DEI advisory or liaison. You are not responsible for what the DEI committee does.
Definitely not. There is somebody that is.
Okay, that's the reason we have it is.
Right.
So it takes it out of our hands. All right, let's see if I can get this correct then. Let me find here. All right, motion's on the floor, uh, suspend indefinitely until six board members are available and appointed. Uh, we will start with yes or no's for Commissioner Albright.
Yes.
Um, Commissioner Gleason.
Yes.
Commissioner Kaczynski.
Yes.
Commissioner Way.
Yes.
Commissioner Wilkins. Resounding no. All right, motion carries four to one. All right, uh, Mayor's comments. Let me see, I wrote something down here somewhere.
I'm going to look at my comments.
Sure. Um, let's see what I did. Oh, okay.
Have you got Mr. Way? Have you got Mr. Way?
Yeah, I think I.
No, he did not. Yeah, no.
He didn't have anything. Then I went to Gleason.
Okay.
All right, uh, Mayor's comments. I had three events. Um, I went to the, well, actually four counting Altech's, um, photo session, although I was late. Um, I went to the Granville County Schools convocation, um, I believe it was yesterday for, uh, new school personnel. They're really fired up about the new school year. So I think that's going to be really exciting to have those kids out there. I had, uh, three other, two other events. The police had their back to school event, um, from what was it, three to five, uh, resounding, resounding success, I would guess. I went up about 4:15 and they were already clearing out because they'd given everything away.
Oh, Mr. Mayor, I, I did send my privacy.
Okay.
Get out of here to help out.
I'm sure he was a big help. No, I went by myself, but they had already cleared out. They had already given out everything. Nobody was there. Then I went to Granville Medical Center, uh, for their new teacher ice cream social that was from five to eight. It turned out it was from three to five. And I sat there for 30 minutes waiting for somebody to show up. So I want credit for attending even though it was thrown. And for anybody that doesn't think getting old as hell, I can guarantee you it is. So anyway, that was my three things. Is there anything else to be brought before the board?
Can I do my representative's report?
No.
Okay.
Go ahead. I'm sorry. I had it down and then moved on after Mr. Gleason. Mayor Proten.
Thank you, Mr. May.
I just explained.
It's going to be hard to follow this aspect we just had here, but on July 31st, I had a meeting with the DOT representative, Lawrence Fernandez and Caitlin Cooper to discuss crosswalk issues on Main Street. Commissioner May, City Manager Mike Turner and Public Work Director Steve Edwards were also in attendance. We reviewed the plans the DOT has for the crosswalks, which will be part of modifications along the NC 50 corridor for pedestrian improvements under one project. With DOT approval and funding, crosswalk upgrades will be made to the intersection of Church and Main Street, a safe, safe to provide a safe crosswalk to cross from the First Baptist Church Academy parking lot to the First Baptist Church parking lot. We discussed all safety provisions that need to be decided and added to keep the pedestrians safe. This may include left turn limitations and pedestrian crossing equipment. We also discussed safe crosswalks to allow pedestrians to cross Wilton Avenue, Highway 56 from Main Street to North Main Street. This will include the addition of a sidewalk for access to the sidewalk over in front of Dollar Tree. Updates to the other existing crosswalks at West Lake and Main and another across Main in front of the old newspaper office were also discussed. They will pursue federal funding and design and let us know the status. Now, things with the NC DOT take time and pursuing funding on a project like this can take up to a year. So let's not look for them tomorrow. Um, I also visited the Campo booth at the CDO office on Main Street on Saturday, which does not provide any shade in that little area. Those poor people were sweating. It was, the sun was directly on them. Um, but they were asking citizens for suggestions for a blueprint for safety program. There was only one item on their board from citizens which had stopped there and it was for a child safety seat giveaway program, which the county does. Um, I expressed to them some of my concern with the anticipated growth and the traffic issues we have on Highway 56 and now on Highway 50 with the, um, traffic that we face daily. I can sometimes not get out of my subdivision either. Remember Granville County Schools opened on August 12th. There's a new traffic pattern at Mount Energy, um, Elementary to help get the cars off of Highway 56. And I would like to thank our police department and all involved at Granville County Schools for their hard work to improve the traffic problems we had last year at that school. Now I would like to thank every business on Main Street for the upgrades to the awnings, the paint and the cleanup that has happened. While they're not all done, I would like to take this opportunity to thank all the building owners on Main Street who have improved the appearance of their storefronts. I know we have a few more that have yet to be completed, but they're still in progress. And this absolutely shows pride and ownership on Main Street. And I also want to thank our city staff who always do a great job for us every single time we ask and, and God knows we ask a lot sometimes. And our city manager for the great job he does.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, I think I'm finally at the end of the agenda. Um, so is there anything else needs to come before the board tonight? Mr. Way.
Mr. City Attorney, you got any comments?
I don't have any.
I, I will get to him. Let me do my job.
I just wanted to make sure we had that closed session there.
Mr. Phil, Mayor Proten.
Um, since Mr. Agatha brought it up and I brought it up last year and I was laughed at, I would like us to have a discussion item on our next meeting for a New Year's Eve party on Main Street.
Mr. City Manager, if you will, put that on the work session.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Albright, anything else? Mr. Wilkins. All right, with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose no. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Yeah, it's a good thing I asked you if you had any comments, huh?
Well, since you did, there was no need for me to ask. That's the only problem I really have. I got too many mayors.
I'm just here to help. I didn't want you to show up at six. We're supposed to have time. But I just.